This is the new agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Joy.
County Commission, do you need to join us?
Hey, Chris, tell him he's gonna lead us in the pledge.
Yeah.
You gotta do this stand up.
It's a good thing you were here.
Is there a video of Whitney's program?
Al, but it's all here in blue if you need it.
That's in what, Spotlight?
I like to open the documents.
It's gonna run out, get my computer. I need to start.
Good evening, let's call this meeting to order. We are so happy tonight to be here at Mumford Middle School. And just want to thank the principal, Louis Blessing, for having us in this beautiful cafeteria. It's just so lovely to be here. And since you were right there, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Everybody stand.
We stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, we'll just get started with the changes and additions, Ms. Rasmussen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The superintendent recommends the approval of changes and additions to the July 9th meeting agenda as follows. Item number 10.05, Lively Technical College move to consideration. Item 19.04, at Board Member Striplin's request, adding item 19.05, the 2019-2020 Capital Health Plan Insurance Options. Adding, I'm sorry, item 18.06, the superintendent recommends board approval of surplus property and vacant land purchase as is and sale of agreement of .22 acres is pulled for further review. Item 19.05, rescinding the approval of the June 18th. Item 19.15, health insurance rates for the 1920 fiscal year. Because of the addition of this item, the 1920 Capital Health Plan Insurance Options have been removed from item 19.06. Item 7.03, approval of personnel actions, there's been replaced documentation and changed the content of the item summary. Excuse me. Item 12.03, the 2019-2020 Dual Enrollment Articulation Agreements between the School Board of Leon County and Tallahassee Community College has some replaced documentation. Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, passes. I wanted to mention Mr. Jones is, be on his way soon, he's at a county commission meeting. Next, we have the superintendent spotlight.
We do, Madam Chair, thank you. Before I do that, I'd also like to thank Mr. Blessing and his staff for having us. This is a beautiful school. My wife's been teaching here since the school opened, I believe about 10 years ago?
Maybe 12.
12 years ago, there you go, time flies. Christie's been a science teacher here at Mumford Middle School for the last 12 years. It's a beautiful facility. It's just a great school, Louis. Thank you so much for serving as our host. I'd also like to thank Dr. Gale and Denver Lee and everyone that did help make this event happen. You know, this is our second show on the road, but it wouldn't happen without all of your hard work. So Denver and Dr. Gale and everyone, thank you so very much. Kelly Walker, thank you for securing dinner tonight. I'd also like to give a special thanks to Prime Meridian Bank and Mary Stafford and Lindsay Shepherd. Thank you, Mary and Lindsay, for providing dinner for the board members. You know, it's not easy to take this show on the road, but I think it is, it is important. And we do this periodically throughout the course of the year and go and visit different parts of our community with different constituents to hear some of their concerns and their issues. And this is a good thing, but it wouldn't happen without a lot of hard work on the part of our, of our employees. So now I'd like to bring up Principal Blessing. We have a really, really cool, one of the, one of the best events of the school year at the end of each year, a long tradition here at Mumford with Mustangs United. So if you would, Mr. Blessing, talk to us a little bit about Mustangs United, introduce your special guest.
Sure. Mustangs United is, is our philosophy of inclusion. It's our way of letting our students know that everybody on this campus has value and everybody has a place in our big Mumford family. And this past year was the 10th year that the event's gone on. I think it gets bigger and better every year, but really, I need to give a lot of credit to Whitney Usina, who's in the back. She's a teacher at Mumford who came up with this idea and has really, it's been her passion for the past 10 years. And I like to tell people that even though it's a, it's a day on the calendar that we really celebrated, it's really become just a part of Mumford Middle School and it's something that we strive to do every day. A picture's worth a thousand words, but I think this video that we're about to show you is priceless. And I really want to thank Denver Lee as well for putting this together because I think it really did a good job of capturing the heart and soul of this event. So instead of me talking, please enjoy. It's about inclusion. Mustangs United is about inclusion more than anything else. We're all sharing this space and we want to make sure we're doing it together, that we're all one big family here.
How do they leave with this, knowing that just being kind and respecting people no matter what limitations or disability they have, they're just like you and I.
You had kids playing guitar and playing violin and strings. Now a part of the ESC program, which is a word, and they became one. So I think that's the whole purpose of this, is to have a student body come together as one of our students.
It's the compassion that we have as, as humans to take care of our own, but events like this help us realize that, you know, there are special kids out there and we all need to include them and respect them and love them.
They know what this message we're trying to send, to be kind and to include everybody in our school.
You can hear it, you can see what it's like. I'm so proud of these students, I'm just so proud of them, it just makes me feel real good, a real part of them.
Student body president at Child's High School, and students' body president and captain of the cheerleading squad to give a message about the importance of being kind to others.
Kindness is not only directing others, but being friendly towards others and being considerate towards others. Being kind, anyone can do it.
This event is like none other. It's so special that it gives these kids a chance to really be the spotlight, the center of attention. It also relays such a great message about setting aside our differences and really just being kind to everyone no matter what.
She is my little sister and I care about her deeply because like she is vulnerable, she can't stick up for herself, and she is an easy target for people to hurt. And it's like a big deal for me to watch out for her.
The point of an education is to educate better citizens, and this is part of being a better citizen, a better Floridian, a better American. And it's just, it makes our hearts smile.
The cheerleaders will be out here cheering for everybody. There's a musical performance by a couple of the students, there's a basketball game.
If everybody enough, possibly, we'd have the whole team here, so. Thanks, though, it's one of the few things where everyone should be included in everything. As long as everyone's playing, then everyone's having fun.
They didn't choose to be one of this way, and they are. And so it's up to us to include them and respect them.
I was just telling the superintendent, this could be a model statewide. It really shows when people come together and work together, it just makes everybody feel good. And it's just such good for these kids.
It was Whitney's idea to surprise the teachers and the parrots with some flowers. So when she came to me with that idea, we will be surprising her today with some flowers and a certificate of appreciation for all that she does as well.
She's just a phenomenal person that, you know, we respect and appreciate her, her being here for us.
She's just an amazing young woman, and we're so blessed to have her as a teacher in our community.
We could not recognize her unless it was a surprise because she wouldn't want it to happen.
She doesn't realize what she's doing is so kind. She's the kind, the sweetest soul there is on this campus.
Being kind is just so much easier to do than just being nice to everybody. And I tell the students here, you don't have to be best friends with anybody, but you just don't have to be mean to anybody.
Although we have this event every year, Mustangs United, that it's really been woven into the fabric of our school. And that even though, again, it's a one-day event, it's really happening every day.
Yeah, so Whitney, we're not gonna let you off the hook that easy, I'm sorry. No, you're gonna come up here, come on. So Whitney was a student, I'm dating both of us now. Whitney was a student when I was a teacher and a coach at Lincoln High School in the mid-'90s, and this is just what makes our community and our school system so special, Whitney. I can't, I'm blown away, I can't thank you enough for doing this. So how about a round of applause for Whitney Usina? No, you can speak. How did it start?
Well, just 10 years ago, I went to a meeting with Melva Jacobs, and Leon did something similar, I think. And I said, well, why don't I do something with Mumford? And Mr. Cook was our principal at the time, he said, I could try something with PE, since I teach PE. And it was good, and he's like, let's keep doing this. And it just kind of grew every year. And then, but I couldn't do it without, like, I have to have a lot of help with the students, with the faculty, the staff, the custodians. I mean, it's not by myself, I just helped organize, but I couldn't do it on my own. So, I mean, two teachers back there here that I couldn't, Stacy's been a part of it, I think, all 10 years, helping me with scoreboard or anything like that. So it's definitely not just me, it's everybody at Mumford, really.
Well, and like Whitney said, there was a program at Leon called Lions United where they pair regular-ed kids with special needs children, and it's just a beautiful thing to watch. I mean, it just, and those regular-ed kids, they pair them with them in the classroom and, and they love it. And they treat them like their own siblings.
They're in PE, and I guess I could see them interacting in PE, and I'm like, and then the clay basketball, and if you're familiar with the, it's kind of the ESC basketball league, and that's during the daytime, I'd see the mainstream students react to that. So, and then honestly, I have to turn students away that want to help. So it's kind of, I already have a list actually for next year of some, because eighth graders usually are involved. Or if you have a sibling, of course, then they're involved. But I kind of already have like a list of 10 for next year, Mustangs United, so.
Yeah, it's funny, and then when we were, when I, when I was growing up, those kids were not accepted. And I'm ashamed to say that, you know? And, and a lot of times when people hear what profession I'm in, they'll go, well, Rocky, I don't know how you do that. How do you work with kids today? They're not the same anymore, but in many ways like this, they are, they're much better. And we should be very proud of our, of our kids, but it's you giving them the opportunities to.
It actually started at Lincoln with you, when I was at Lincoln, when you were there, and they had sign language. And I would take sign language classes for my foreign language, and they kind of paired them up with students with disabilities and that's where it just kind of, from then on, I just kind of wanted to be a part of helping, helping them out, I guess.
Well, and Whitney's daughter, where's your, where's your daughter, what grade is she in now? The one that like raises money for everything, from animals to...
She'll be here next year.
She's coming, and she's just cut from the same fabric as Whitney is. I mean, just an amazing young woman who gives all of her time and energy and efforts to support worthy causes.
July 27th, Saturday at Lady and Sports, she'll have her next car wash for the Stuff the Bus she wants to do again, so.
Thank you, Whitney.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, that's a great way to start off the meeting because, you know, we're about kids. And that's just so representative of what we want everybody to be doing is respect and kindness. And that's nothing to do with the ABCs, it has to do with your heart. And that's just as, you know, I think it's the most important job we do, actually, to, we want the kids leaving school with that value. So thank you for doing that out here at Mumford and Leon and all the other schools. I know they have examples of this we could, we could point out. So thank you for starting our meeting out that way. And so here we go. We have reports to be heard. And let's see, we have none to date, none to date, none to date. Let's go to the Volunteer Partner Mentor Update with Kelly Walker.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Hannah. It is so great to be back home tonight. I don't know if many of you know it, but I was at Mumford Middle School for six and a half years. I was actually here a whole year before the school opened, and the school was called Middle School CC back then, before it had its official name. But it is such, so good to be back home tonight. I wanted to share some information with you tonight about the volunteer program. We have our new volunteer program statistics out. And just a little refresher course, the volunteer office oversees three main programs. We have our volunteer program, our mentor program, and our Partners for Excellence program. And before I share the good news of our latest statistics, I want to stand before you tonight and tell you how appreciative I am of all the people in this community. You know, I say all the time, we really do live in a community that gets it. They are so supportive of public education, and really, these statistics reflect that, commitment and that dedication. A few weeks ago, I heard a great quote, and I want to start out by sharing that tonight. The author of the quote is Brian Solis. He's a digital analyst, and it's, it'll be up on the screen, too. This actually works, my remote works. But listen to what Mr. Solis said. "Community is so much more than belonging to something, it's about doing something together that makes belonging matter." And I really think that captures the essence of what volunteers, mentors, and partners are bringing to our school system every day. So let's dive into our numbers. These are hot off the presses. I am very happy to stand before you tonight to tell you, we have set a new district record for how many registered volunteers that we have. For the 2018-19 school year, we had 18,606 volunteers. That's an increase of 1,927 volunteers. And then those volunteers, they donated in excess of 172,000 volunteer hours. There's a group out there called the Independent Sector. They assign a dollar amount for a volunteer hour. For the 2018-19 school year, that dollar amount was $24.69. So if you take that value and multiply it by the volunteer hours, our total volunteer labor was $4.2 million last year. Okay, let's move on to our mentor program. Good news as far as that, we've set another district record for how many mentors we placed last school year. 1,337, that's 182 more mentors than we placed last year. I think we're on track to probably exceed that total for next year. Tomorrow night, I'm going to Pineview Elementary School, and we already have 91 mentors signed up for training just tomorrow night. So very, that's good, good news. And then our final program is the Partners for Excellence program. We had 753 registered partners. Total number of partnerships, 1,081. The value of the Partners for Excellence program was a little bit over $2 million. So if you take the volunteer labor, the mentor labor, and the value of the Partners for Excellence program, our total community involvement value was $6.7 million. And that's an increase of $657,000 over the last school year. So I just, you know, I stand here tonight very humbled. I, you know, I joke, and it's not really a joke, I feel like I have the best job in the district because I get to see the generosity and just such a generous spirit from so many of our citizens. And they're, they're willing to share their gifts of time, talent, and resources with our students. So anyway, I just, I wanted to share those statistics with you, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Great talk, Kelly. Thank you, Senator.
Well, Kelly, and it doesn't happen without your leadership. We are so blessed and fortunate to have you, and you did this for free for a long, long time. I know it probably feels like you're still doing it for free, but it's your time at Gilchrist and your time here, and we're just lucky as a school system to have you so involved in reaching out and making this happen because it wouldn't happen without you. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next, we have persons to be heard.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We have one speaker. Gloria Marion Smith. If you would please come up, give us your name and full, and your address for the record. You will have three minutes.
Thank you.
One second. Okay.
Gloria Marion Smith, 2141 Portsmouth Circle, Tallahassee, Florida. Retired employee of Leon County Schools. But I'm still on my mission. My concern tonight is, as I watch the graduation of all the high school students that, in Leon County Schools, I did a figure, I went to the newspaper and I looked at the numbers, what the numbers looked like with the graduation. Well, I did a kind of little balance here, about 1,500 students graduated this year in Leon County School. My question is, at this point, what is the enrollment or what the percentage did lively vocational college pick up for these kids? Because we know all of them have not gone to college or gone to the junior college. I just needed, I just wanted to know as a citizen, how many or what's the percentage of students were lively able to, to pick up, enroll, and what was the major courses that these students were also probably enrolled in? That is my concern.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Ma'am, the three minutes is your opportunity to give public comments of any kind, to the extent you have questions. The principal of Lively is here.
Yeah, and that's who I'm addressing it to, the superintendent and the principal, because those are the people that should be knowing exactly what was our percentage, what was our pickup numbers? What was it since we turned this thing into a college? What was our percentage? Did we pick up and then look at what courses are these children actually enrolled in if we got any of them?
Okay, thank you for your, for your comments. No other speakers, Madam Chair.
Okay, we're gonna go to items of consent. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, passes. We're gonna move to item 19.
Well, Madam Chair, if I, if I may, you're moving very fast, and I like that, that's not, that's not a bad thing. But I have to give a couple of recognitions. As part of the personnel...
Oh, yes, of course.
Moves tonight, we had two promotions in there. And one, we have a, had an opening at Springwood Elementary School for a school principal, Ms. Tina Austin, is moved over to Gilchrist as an assistant, assistant principal, which left an opening for a principal. And we are proud tonight to name Ms. Sylvia Myers as the principal at, at, at Springwood Elementary School. And she's been with our district, she's waiting for her turn, and guess what? I called her in, I said, get off the bench, get out of the dugout, and get up to bat.
Yes, yes.
And she, and she's ready. So Sylvia, thank you so much, and we're very excited for your leadership.
Thank you, thank you. I am, I'm very humbled and excited, superintendent, school board members. There have been a lot of prayers and preparation for this event, but I cannot say anything without thanking God because I know that this appointment comes from Him. I do appreciate you being a vessel, but definitely, definitely comes from, from Him. And, and I have to thank my family and friends because they have been listening to this for, I'm not gonna tell you how many years, but they've been listening to it, but a lot of prayers and preparation. But I realize that this appointment is, is just the beginning, and that the work is, is to be done now, and the prayers will not stop, and the preparation will not stop. Because every morning when I get up, I'm gonna come to Springwood Elementary, ready to work with the teachers and the staff and the parents and the community members each and every day, and reminding them and making sure that we all understand that we are there to work for the kids at Springwood. And I cannot wait to meet them and see their little faces. I'm, I'm so excited and so humbled, and again, thank you very much.
Congratulations. And as part, as part of that, so Sylvia left then an opening, you know, there's a domino effect to everything, left an opening for an assistant principalship position at Kate Sullivan Elementary School. And I'm proud to announce the other promotion in the personnel package tonight is Brooke Sperling. So Brooks, if you would stand, come up, come on up, come on up, and tell them a little bit about yourself. And speaking of Springwood, this is how things kind of go full circle here. So Brooks, why don't you introduce yourself to the school board?
Thank you. I'm really excited for this next step in my career. This has been a really emotional day, but I'm excited to follow in your footsteps. I hope I do you proud, and I'm looking forward to being a crocodile.
It's a good, it's good.
Yeah, green's a good color. I got this.
That's what she said, I look good in green, so.
Yeah, I can do green.
Well, I was just, I was just proud to be the vessel today, so congra, so congratulations.
Oh, that's right. Yes.
Anything else, Superintendent, before we move on?
No, ma'am, I'm sorry.
No, that's good.
We're good.
We need to recognize these folks, we're so proud of them. Okay, so we have an annual license agreement renewal. Ms. Gregory?
Madam Chair, Superintendent School Board Members, good evening. Before you, tonight, you have an annual license agreement renewal for the 2019-20 school year between curriculum associates who do business in our district as I-Ready and Leon County Schools. This is an annual license agreement, and it provides computer-based differentiated instruction in English Language Arts and in math. 14,611 students participate in the program with an average usage of 18 hours and 40 minutes in reading, 17 hours and 2 minutes in math for an average total of 36 hours per year, so one hour a week.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move the superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 It passes?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you're Leon High School Security Building, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Hunky R. is not at Leon High School tonight. He is in Mexico with his wife on a family, a well-deserved family trip, so I told him I would pinch it tonight. So item 1902, the security building at Leon High School is part of our ongoing effort to use those resources we allocated by the state for hardening of our schools. We're gonna build a guard station, for lack of a better word, at the entrance to Leon High School that will be monitored by one of those school security monitors throughout the entire school day. As a first step, Leon is somewhat problematic given its location in downtown Tallahassee, so a lot of work and effort's gone into developing a plan with Mr. Hunky R. along with Mr. Albret and others to, to secure that campus and to harden it the best we possibly can. And this is one of the first steps, is to, is to bring on this, this guard facility that can monitor the comings and goings of the campus throughout the course of the school day.
Move approval.
Second. There's a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes? And, boy, those kids at Skipper are just going to hate that, that thing, aren't they?
Glad I didn't have that guard station when I was a student there.
I know.
Forty years ago.
Miss everywhere. May I make a comment?
First of all, thank you for bringing this item. Mr. Hunkyard and I have been talking about it since we first create, you first created our little committee of two. But I was going to, if we were, if, with your permission, at the next meeting, what I'd like to do is show some pictures. I drove by, I think it was Windermere High School, and I was really struck by the way that they were able to beautifully harden that school with layers of landscaping and walls, and it didn't look like a prison at all, but there was definitely, there was a guard check here and a guard check there. And I, and I snapped some pictures with my phone. What concerns me is that I know that the legislature, legislators and others are constantly watching Leon because here we are in the shadow of the Capitol. It's the most visible school we have. And I remember the day after Parkland, the week after Parkland, I think I've told you this before, I was driving down the road, and I saw these little ninth graders walking to lunch, and just tears sprung to my eyes because I thought that could have been us. And it concerns, I know it won't be popular to talk about not having an open campus for lunch, or never mind, you know, skipping, but I'm just, I think we have to have that conversation. But this is a beautiful first step, and I'm very grateful, and, and I've been assured that it will be architecturally sound for the historic, you know, register or whatever, and it'll look very appropriate and not, you know, yes, exactly. So, thank you.
I, I, I think that it's a good thing to do as well. I'm wondering, though, given as we look at our whole county, and I know our schools are configured on sites differently, the earth, the terrain is all different, but is there a plan to look further at other high schools, God be, or?
Every single one of them. They did a complete security audit of every school. Chief Hunkyard went out in the spring and did a needs assessment at every, at every single school, and there's a plan for every school. And I think it'd be good, maybe in our next agenda review, when John's
Yeah, it's going.
...returns safely from Mexico,
Yes.
that he gives an update as to where we are with that $1.2 million, how it was allocated, and what progress has been made throughout the district. I think that, that would be very appropriate.
Yes, it would be.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it. Next, we have Kelsey Cleveland versus Leon County School Board.
So, 1903 is Kelsey Cleveland versus LCS. It stems from an incident that happened, I believe, back in 2015, 14, 1415, somewhere in, somewhere in that time. As you know, we have ongoing litigation all the time. So, this is a case that's finally, finally been settled. Our exposure with the company, because it was a civil matter that involved termination and some other, and some other things, was $25,000. The carrier would pick up the rest of the, of the settlement agreement.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, be it. And next is Lively Technical Report. So, I see the principal, Ms. Shelley Bell, coming forward.
Yep. Good evening, school board members. We're asking for approval of a PTSA for Lively to work with the 223 Agency. It's a locally-owned small business who maintains our website, does video production, manages our digital footprint to include all of our social media, Facebook, YouTube channel, Instagram, Twitter, and does our graphic design.
Move approval? Been moved?
Second.
Been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, superintendent.
All right, let me try to get you out of the mess I put you in. How about that?
Okay.
Okay, you like that, Ms. Bell?
Yes, sir.
All right, we talked at, at length yesterday about this proposal from Capital Health Plan to adjust some of our co-pays and have a downward trend with our premiums that would help a lot of our employees. And I strongly believe is, it's the right decision as a business, but it may not be the right decision about the morale of our, our employees, and that, and that outweighs any business decision. We talked a lot about school safety, and that's always job one, but job two is the morale of our employees, and many of them are sitting behind me tonight, and there's uncertainty, and there's anxiety, and we don't need that. There's no, you can't put a price tag on that. I know, I think Mr. Gunner's here again tonight. I told him he didn't even have to come, and I think, there he is. But, we negotiated a, a deal with Capital Health Plan that would have saved us about $2 million, 1.5 for the district, and about half a million dollars for our employees. Some employees would have been affected. We talked, when we, when we moved to pass the item last night, about setting up a health plan reimbursement account. Capital Health Plan got a little nervous about that because what they're trying to do is change behaviors, and their model was based on changing behaviors, that people would not use the emergency room as often. They would use Amwell and other, and other options because the emergency room is so expensive. But if we were offering some type of reimbursement, maybe those behaviors wouldn't change, and it would be a, a bad business decision on their part. So, given all the, the anxiety and the, and the timeliness of it, and they promised, when, that's why I had to leave yesterday, and I apologize, because Mr. Hogan agreed to meet with me, and he's a very hard man to meet with. But we shared some of my concerns about the timeliness of it, or the lack of timeliness, that we hopefully can get information and numbers sooner at the end of May, the first part of June, so we aren't in a rush to make a decision. We know this option is out there. It will continue to be out there. Waukulla County Schools went to this model several years back. For Waukulla County Schools, I believe it was more an issue of financial distress and, and where they were as a school system, they really didn't have a choice. We have a choice, which is, which is a, a good problem, a good problem to have, but it will come at, you know, at the expense of the money we have left over in our unrestricted fund balance that, that can go to support programs that you all discussed yesterday, and for raises for our employees. But I think at the end of the day, although it took me a while to get here, this is the right decision for now. And then if we look later, maybe with more education and, and better messaging, that one day we, we may look to, to make a change, to do something different. We know insurance rates are going to continue to climb. I don't know, Bart, if you want to come up here and add anything to, to what I'm saying, but insurance rates are going to continue to climb. We're not going to see a year they're going to decrease. But if we play this, if we play this card now, then we, then we won't be able to play it again in the future. So, maybe we keep this card in our back pocket for a while, and if we see a, a year where they increase seven, eight, nine, heaven forbid, 10%, then, then we look to move in a, in a different direction. But I'm very concerned with the cost of healthcare, especially for our families. Ms. Strippman, we've talked about that, is, is going to rise again another $53 a month, so it'll go from 800 to 850 dollars for our families, which is, that's, that's steep. And, you know, I was hoping to provide some relief, but it, that, providing that relief, unfortunately, came with some emotional baggage, and it's just not worth the, the baggage right now. And I think the moment's just not, just not right. So, I apologize for putting you in this situation to, to begin with. I had good intentions. All of us have very good intentions. We're not here to harm our employees. We love our employees and care deeply for them, and, and at times, we'll just have to agree to disagree. This is one of those times, though, I feel like the, the negative impact it could potentially have greatly, or outweighs the, any potential benefit monetarily. You going to add anything?
No. You did a great job. I would just say quickly, because there were some questions two weeks ago about why would Capital Health Plan have a say or have a concern with regards to establishing an HRA, which was to create a safety net? And what the superintendent talked about really was, the rates were established to affect utilization. And so, one of the reasons why we wanted to, you know, that, it all kind of happened on the fly here at the podium, and, and so, what, what we want to do is really step back, address the issue, you know, and I think the reality is, if we would have moved to that quality program, the school district would have been about 60% of that, of that program. So, one, you know, being such a major part in, in the, in the select program that we're in, we're, we're in a much larger pool, and so we, we would just be a little more vulnerable to if we had a bad year, the rates would, we don't have the protection of the community rating that Capital Health Plan provides because we would be the biggest fish by far in that pond and in, and in that particular program. And, you know, they were concerned about that. The way they communicated probably wasn't the best, but they kind of, you know, locked in on that. But, you know, they, they were sending a message, and so what we were able to talk about was, let's step back, bring in the insurance, you know, committee, and let's bring them in in a discussion and, and do this, you know. At some point, we're going to have to look to, to do this. The, the costs keep going up, and we've talked about that plenty of times. But I do appreciate staff and superintendent's effort to try to make the, the hard step, but, but, you know, with, I appreciate the chairman's approach too, of trying to create a safety net, and, you know, maybe if we step back, we can come with a little more complete program, if that's the will of the committee and of the superintendent in the future, to just be a little bit more ready and have communications with all the partners involved, instead of just kind of winging it from here at the podium.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions too, maybe? One question I have is, so I heard what you said, that Capital Health Plan didn't want to basically allow an HRT because it would throw off their numbers and people wouldn't change their behaviors. If we were to set up some education programs, some PR programs about the ER visits and, you know, why, that's one of the reasons that's raising our costs, and we could show some improvement with our employees over the year, I'm wondering if that would help us negotiate next year with Capital Health Plan?
I think it would. Once again, it, Capital Health Plan is incredibly unique, and so, the, the community rating aspect of their, of their model is really only us and six other counties. So, it's, it's a unique bubble, and yet, but these are all things that we were planning to do anyway, and, and to approach that. And superintendent mentioned Amwell, that's that Teladoc app, and, and so there are things that the, the committee, you know, has us looking into and try, have been concerned about trying to push the education side. But to, from a rating standpoint, we are on the credit side, you know, compared to what our losses are. And I don't know if that, I don't know how deep you want to go, but the reality is, is we're getting a, a good deal. I don't know that we're going to, even if we affect the loss ratio, since it's a community-wide, county-wide structure, it's not going to have that great of, of an impact. But, we are talking about, you know, even maybe getting with the city and the county and talking about utilization. And there's a group called Working Well that some of y'all might know about, and, you know, we're talking about doing some things because of the unique nature, nature of Capital Health Plan, trying to educate not just us and our folks and our people, but educate the community on that. Because, you know, you have these, these billboards that say four-minute wait, and, and it's pretty, and you got blue lights, and it's all nice, and everybody rushes to that ER. And, yeah, you have to make a phone call to go to urgent care and get an appointment and that sort of thing. So, that's what we, because the difference in cost is adding a zero to, to the end of it. So, you know, you're going from $2,500 average ER stop to, you know, $200 urgent care stop. And so, that's, it's a real community issue, and so, we're going to be coming back to you with some plans to try to not just educate our, our piece, but, you know, as leaders in the community, educating the community as a whole.
Okay. Madam Chair? Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Superintendent and, and Mr. Gunner, I appreciate your being back tonight with this explanation. And two weeks ago, as the students would say, I was feeling some kind of way about this, you know how they use that? But then I heard the explanation, and I thought, all right, well, all right, go ahead and vote for this. But one of my concerns, well, actually, I have two. First of all, I think that more education is needed, and then to provide better messaging for the entire Team Leon system. The other thing I'm thinking is that we have committees who represent the offices or the entities on the health insurance committee. And these folks, I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, will get the input and the feedback from those areas that they represent and come back as a committee and vote, right? And so, they did that. And so, we heard that committee's report, and yet, we voted as we did. That, that's done. And then I'm remembering another time when we heard from a committee, I think it may have had to do with the charter schools. They voted one way, and we, the board, voted another way. And that's okay. We have to vote our feelings, thoughts, facts, and opinion. But the thing that I, I want us never to lose sight of, and you've mentioned it already tonight, Mrs. Superintendent, is that we will continue to value the input of all of the constituents and all of our workers. And your coming back tonight, I think, is a giant and wonderful step to do that. Because otherwise, why would we need committees if we're not going to listen to them? And so, for the last two weeks, I've been thinking, wait a minute. Is that really what you really wanted to do? And so now, you've been called the vessel by somebody else, and I'm going to call you the vessel again tonight for, for bringing this back so that I could have my say about this. I really think that the time is always right to do what is right, but at this time, it is not the time, I think, as you've just suggested, to do what it was that you were recommending two weeks ago. So, I look forward to what we may do to make sure that in the future, we have the kind of education for all of the players in this, and that we continue to make certain that the kind of diverse input that we need, we get, and to move this along. And I am continuing to be for teacher salaries and for any other kind of program implementation we may need to do, if there ever is. But I just really think you're picking up and sensing that the morale is where it is, and us listening now to those voices that undergird the work that we do in this, this community is just, is just great. So, I commend you for that.
And about the committee thing, and we just make, we also need to ensure that we're selecting our committees with fidelity. We're not just grabbing ten people
Absolutely.
...off the street and saying, hey, you're on this committee. And then when we go to vote, a third of them are missing.
Right. And I'm certain you'll make sure of that.
Yeah, and that's, and that's a lot, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a slow learner, but I can learn. It's just going to take me a little time, and this will be a learning experience for me. And I like, but I like to thank Kim Banks, put a lot of time and effort and energy into this and working with CHP, because they don't like to think outside of the box. They have a model, and it's that model and that model only. But let's also be clear, that's the only option. And we would love it if we could have two options, if we had the option of the people that, that were not using the, the physicians and those services as much could pick this one, right? And have a reduction in rate, and the other, and the other folks would pay a little increase in rate, but have the same co-pays. We don't have that opportunity because of the way it's set up. We have one plan that has a very high deductible, probably a $4,000 deductible out of pocket before the co-pays kick in. And then we have a second option. We don't have, we don't have three options. The other piece that I think Bart was alluding to, about Leon County Schools unfortunately doesn't help the community rating because the majority of our employees are, are females, and that's not a bad, that's not a bad thing. It's just females take their healthcare a lot more serious than guys do.
They get better.
Well, and, and then they bear children, and, but, but, but I think what Ms. Wood said, education's important about the Amwell and other things, that we can look to change behaviors on our own without trying to do it as, as a financial increase, that we can do it as to, these are the options that are available to you outside of the emergency room, or outside of other, you know, other things. And, and that we educate people that there's a $2,000 medical limit. A lot of people don't, don't understand that. And then that any annual, annual evaluation, any checkup, pap smear, mammogram, all of those things, their annual exams, they're all free of charge. There is no co-pay. But we, we need to do a better job of educating our employees. That's the bottom line.
Absolutely.
Speaking of that education, and I don't know how much of a push there's been on this, or how, what the rate is, but it helps the district and the employee if they will declare upfront what they plan to spend for the year. And some of the people we heard from clearly know what their medical bills at the minimum are going to be. And so, I think we need to do a
Yep.
...better job on helping them understand the great benefit tax-wise of doing that, and it helps the district, because then we don't pay as much
Totally.
...tax because it's pre-tax. tax because it's pre-tax.
I agree.
I think we could work on that, on that piece as well.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could, I just want to make sure that we're all clear on, procedurally, on where we are. We've got two separate agenda items. The first one, the Superintendent is asking the board to rescind its prior action from that June 18th board meeting. The second, and if the board, needing board action for that. And then the second item is the Superintendent asking the board to approve the insurance plan that's outlined in that agenda item summary and the attached documentation.
Okay. So 1905 is the rescinded approval, do I have a motion?
May it so move?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Wait. Before we go, I just, I just want to say that this, this item, I'm a little heartbroken about it. And I know, I know Superintendent, I think you are as well. This was a hard-fought battle and Kim and everyone who, and Bart and the agency to try to find some relief for our families, for, you know, our parents. And I've spoke very, you know, very openly about that I was that, that teacher that paid, you know, half my paycheck went to have health insurance for my family, and y'all fought hard for relief for them. And so it is not without a little pain that I do this, but with Superintendent, I spoke about it earlier, and I trust him, you know, I do. I know that you're doing what's best. And I feel like if we were to put this out to vote like we did school start times, we almost might have the exact same. We would be split right down the middle, you know? That we would have half the people, you know, that, that teacher that's paying out of their $40,000 paycheck, $800 a month, you know, they would be, this would be, they would be overjoyed for this. And then the person that has the tier two and tier three and their $40 co-pay is now going to 75, they would be heartbroken that they're moving in that direction. So we're, this was a, this was like a, a no win. I mean, I just, it's a win, it's a no win. I don't know what to say. It just, I feel really, really angst about it and very, just sad that we were, that we were so close to relief for our families, but yet I do understand. So I think looking back, if there was anything we could have done differently, it maybe would have said, let's hold off for two weeks and see if we can gather, you know, enough. And it's no fault of anybody, I know y'all did the best you could trying to get the information, and then we're trying to turn it around before the school year and meet the contract deadlines. So, so I just, you know, I want our teachers to know and our, and our employees to know that we are, this is a huge indicator that we're listening to you, but sometimes there are, there are such tough decisions, they're going to adversely affect one part of the population, no matter which way we go, and that's just tough. So I just want to thank everybody who put all the work into this, and hopefully one day we'll come back to it when, when we have the chance.
Agreed.
Great. I have a motion in second, and I'm going to call for the vote again. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. It passes. And then we have the next one, 1906, which is approving the proposed Capital Health Plan option. Do I have a motion for that?
May I have approval?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Here we are, 20 upcoming meetings. Do we have any announcements about that? Financial statements for fiscal year, those are information items. Do we have any need to hear about that? Superintendent's comments? Do you have any, Superintendent?
Briefly, we do have a special guest with us tonight, Latoya Davenport, the new executive director of the Early Learning Coalition was here earlier. There she is.
Where?
So thank you, Latoya. We had a reception for her the other night welcoming her to Tallahassee. I know she's already met with Brooke Maruner, and we're excited about partnering with the Early Learning Coalition as we look to face backwards and improve our relationships with not only that organization, but with all of the private providers in Tallahassee and Leon County as we start working with those people that are going to help prepare those children into our school system when they get to kindergarten. So welcome again to Tallahassee.
Really welcome. This board is very, very interested in pre-K education. We know that is the solution to help our children be ready for school, so we look forward to working with you.
Welcome to town.
Yes. Welcome to Tallahassee.
Do we have any continuing concerns from board members?
On here.
Do we have any new issues from board members? This may be the shortest meeting of the year, and it is summertime, and I want to thank everybody for coming. And with no further ado, I'm going to say, we adjourn.
Oh, we adjourn, yes.